All meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See if you want roll call, please.
Well, sure. Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Stolby.
Yes.
Miller. Bellixon.
Yes.
Mayor Bees.
Okay, and we do have in addition to ordinances and resolutions, so that would be C, a resolution approving fees for the rental housing licensing program for 2022.
I'll move on that resolution.
I'll second. All right, any citizens comments? Oh, did I need to do all in favor say aye?
Yeah.
Yep, roll call too. All in favor say aye for that adding the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any citizens comments? And no public hearings, so we'll do the reading and approval of the minutes from 10:26.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from 10:26.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried and the condensed minutes from 10:26.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Any further discussion on those? Okay, we have the consent agenda, which concludes the audit of city bills, the October transit report, gambling reports, and an application for exempt permit for the Morris Fire Department Relief Association, and I will move approval on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that?
None here.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, whipping through. There's no petition request in communications, so we will move on to the ordinance and resolutions. There's a resolution for authorization to execute the MINDOT Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant contract.
Yeah, so this is our normal operations and maintenance. It's getting kind of confusing because we're seeing different pots of money coming in different places, and actually when this one, this is for the period July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023, I believe the amount, was it $29,000 for this one? But this is our normal maintenance contract. The only difference this year is they wanted to know if we wanted to spread it out to different things, so they allowed some additional uses, but then it was going to get even more complicated because if we wanted to do that, then we had to get a grant for that additional use versus what we're doing now, and it just seemed simpler doing it this way. Because we did get another grant through the ARP funding for operation and maintenance. We can use it for that. It's the COVID-related stuff, and we believe that between those two grants, we might be able to cover most of our operation and maintenance, at least for this upcoming year. But this is one we do every single year. We wind up having a maintenance contract with MINDOT.
I'll move on this resolution.
I will second.
Okay, we'll do roll call vote on that?
Yep.
Councilor Miller, Wallers.
Yes.
Stolby.
Yes.
Bellixon.
Yes.
Mayor Bees.
Okay, then the resolution approving the assignment and assumption of certain interests in and to a development.
So I think what I would recommend is if we can skip over this one and go to the fee one next, I think Mike Stolby called and said something about being here. He's one of the owners of the building and operates the building, so if we could do that and get the fee one out of the way, that'd probably be the best thing to do. Otherwise, I'll speak to this one.
Okay, so we'll move to the resolution approving fees for the rental housing licensing program for 2022, and we have guest speakers. Speaker. No, we want Jessica too. You need to come up.
Jessica, all right.
Not plural.
I brought Jessica with because she is our new staff person who will be doing the rental licensing, so it'd be good for her to see what goes on here. But I do have. I do have a change in the fees. We have not changed the fees since 2017, as you see on that form. We currently have 972 units licensed in the city of Morris with 348 unique owners. So there's been lots of activity, changes of ownership and things like that this year. At the end of 2020, there was a surplus in our budget of about $1,400. In 2021, I expect us to be very close to that again because we have a staff person that was gone for a while. But in 2022, I think we'll end up in a deficit if we don't do something with this. And, you know, one of the easiest and fairest ways to do it in our viewpoint is to raise the renewal fee on each building by $10. That'll raise another $3,700 for the budget. So many of these fees, the regular recurring things are raised slightly, like the license transfer fee, things like that, but there are some that we've bumped up pretty substantially, and the reason for that is simply as a deterrent for people who become problems that take a great deal of time and energy. So things like reinstating the license after they've been suspended or it's been revoked. There's a lot of things that go on leading up to that, and it's a very time-consuming process. The interim requested inspections, we pay the inspector now a little bit more than we used to, so we need to increase that, I think. Other than that, I'll just see if you have any questions or want more of an explanation.
You said we had 900 and how many units?
972.
That's including like apartments and?
Right, so if there's a building with 18 units, that's 18.
Okay, I get you. 972, you said?
972, yes.
It's the owners. That's a lot of owners, 348 owners.
There's been quite a bit of changeover. It used to be, you know, there were several that had 23, and that's been changing, so.
So it's going from 65 then to 75 something?
Right, and it'd be 75 for each building, and then you have that additional $15 for each unit at a building. So for a house, it'd be 75 dollars.
Okay. Seems reasonable, I guess enough to me.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'll move on the resolution approving fees for the rental housing licensing program for 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote on that?
Councilor Stolby.
Yes.
Miller, Wallers.
Yes.
Bellixon.
Yes.
Mayor Bees.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
No, no, thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie.
Expect to hear it from Jessica next time, correct?
Yep, that's it. Drill and griller then. Okay, we're going to move back up to ordinance and resolution B, because I think we have someone here representing this, is that correct?
So, yeah, Mike walked in right after we got this flip-flopping him. So do you want to come up and kind of explain what's going on with this?
Sure, thanks, Mike.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Mike Stolby, I live in St. Cloud and one of the partners of the East Point Village Apartments. We developed that project about, I think, four and a half years ago, 61 units, very nice, and hopefully it's a complement to the housing stock that you have in Morris. But I think it was the first week of September, I was approached by an investor who currently owns some of our, he's in some of our partnerships, and he sold a warehouse building. His name is John Kramer, and he's from Old Spring. And he said, "Mike, I'd like to invest the proceeds with your company and ideally buy an existing building." His equity matched up nicely, and talked to my two partners, and we've decided to sell our East Point building. Couple of weeks ago, we were informed that he's bringing on another, kind of an additional partner to spread his risk a little bit. The good news is he's going to continue to utilize our company to operate the facility long-term. We've got three wonderful local people that we employ, and they will all be staying on, and we use a lot of local trades and purchase from local merchants for the most part. So we're very grateful to the council, the mayor, and Blaine for all of your assistance, and again, we're going to, we're not leaving, so. The closing is scheduled for the end of this month, so November 30th. It's a Tuesday after Thanksgiving, and our council and the buyer's council is asking for three documents. I think they're two listed on our agenda. One of them, let's see here, if I have it on the list.
It should all be in the packet, though.
You have, the two main items are there, the assignment of the TIF note, the assignment of the development agreement, and then the third one is, would be triggered by the closing, which would be a termination of collateral assignment with our lender who is home federal bank, so.
Yeah, so that's, the three documents in here are resolution approving the assignment, there's the collateral assignment of development agreement, and the TIF note, and then in the back, there's the assignment of tax increment financing note.
I did talk to our council a couple hours ago, and it tells the date of Blaine, and he indicated that if that termination is not here for the resolution passage, he could get it to your office. And of course, that won't occur until the closing occurs.
What's the closing date?
November 30th.
Yeah, so we have another meeting on the 23rd.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll work.
Okay. Any questions of me or?
And so then I'll just go on to say that anytime we're dealing with TIF, we have an attorney, actually, I think Briggs &amp; Morgan got sold. Mary Apple's the attorney that works on all of our TIF documents. She's with Briggs &amp; Morgan, which is now Taft Law Firm, and so as soon as Mike contacted me about the possibility that the ownership would be turned over to somebody else, I contacted Mary, and she started working with the attorneys for you and the new investors, and all these documents are worked out by her. She's reviewed them, she's approved them, and that's the way we've been doing it ever since we've been doing TIF, since I've been here. So you should be very comfortable knowing that our TIF attorney has looked all this stuff over, and the only thing I would probably add to that is that the fee for her service to review all this will have to be paid at the time that we close on the documents, you know, because we don't, you know, that's a, typically what we would do is get a deposit before we'd have her start working, but the nature of this one was a little bit different. So the estimate from her is probably about $5,000 for attorney fees.
My partners will get to pay that.
Yeah, so.
I'm coming here instead, so I'll get to pay it.
So that's normally what happens, and we've done that before too, so.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is that the council should go ahead and act on this, and then we'll get that other document and get it on the agenda to get that one approved too.
Okay. I believe the buyer, or the buyers, I should say, they're also tenants in common, and they need to put down a substantial deposit with their lender tomorrow. They're doing a Fannie Lee loan, and so we would all appreciate your passing the resolution tonight.
We're basically, I'm going to go ahead.
Mike, was there, where are you at with the development of the, didn't at one time you were going to add on, is that still in the works, or are you all done, completed with the additions that you originally intended, or what's the new owner's intentions?
Fair question. We have an adjacent pad site that's part of the existing parcel, and we actually had a blueprint to, actually, we looked at two blueprints. One of them would allow for 24-unit expansion. The second one that we did had 31 units, which I think was a little too dense. Different floor plans, I think the second one had smaller units, but they were predominantly efficiency and more better units. I shouldn't be tough on my partners, but I might have shared this with Blaine about, let's see, I think it was six months before the COVID hit, we thought about pursuing the expansion, and we all, we had a meeting, and we all came to an agreement that it might be a little aggressive, we should wait a while, and then COVID hit, and we did encounter some vacancies. You know, the university went virtual, and we have a fair number of students there, so I, you know, I have an interest, but I'm selling. I know the buyer very well. I think he will be intentioned, if the market supports it, to expand, and frankly, one of the first considerations would be to add more garages. We've got 30 garages for 61 units. We're full, and we have a lengthy waiting list, and we need more, we need more parking stalls, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for answering that, Mike. I was just kind of curious. I know at one time you were considering doing something, and I just didn't know kind of where we were at with that, and just kind of nice to know.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
So we're just basically reassigning all the TIF and everything to new ownership?
Right.
What's the third document that's missing, or that we're talking about?
Well.
Or isn't it?
It sounded like a termination document.
The third document.
Or a document that we're missing that you said you need to have.
Yeah, and I think Blaine referenced it, but it's a termination of the collateral assignment with our current lender, which is home federal savings bank. That would only occur after the closing.
Okay.
So we'll have our council forward that to Blaine's office or your council.
Yeah.
I see no reason that assigning it to new ownership, if it would be, wouldn't be any problems with that. So I'll move on the resolution approving the assignment and assumption of certain interests in and to a development agreement.
I will second.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote on that?
Councilor Wallers.
Yes.
Stolby.
Yes.
Miller.
Bellixon. Yes.
Mayor Bees.
Okay.
There you go.
Can I ask a final question?
Yep.
On the legal fees, is that something, I know it's probably, your figure's probably ballpark, is that something that the city could prepare an invoice for the closing and be paid out of closing, or how would you like to do that?
Yeah, so I sent an email to Mary today. I was assuming she was done, but apparently she's not done. There's a few things left that she has to do, and so right now, I think she was at $2,500. One of the things we could do is just ask for a deposit, but then, once it's cleared out, I just don't know when the final amount's going to be decided. I think she'll know by closing.
Okay, or you could invoice me.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to continue with the management.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll have the funds, so.
Yeah.
No problem.
Yeah, well, we'd never run into any problems whatsoever with those legal fees, because it's just understood, you know, as part of the process, and, yeah.
Thank you much.
You bet.
Thank you, yeah.
Good seeing you, Mike.
All right, moving on to the senior managers' report.
Lots, we have lots of stuff going on. It's kind of interesting how everything's going. The one, I will add that we did find out who our Green Corps member is going to be. The individual's name is Trigg Sonheim. He's actually a University of Minnesota, Morris graduate, graduated in the spring and with a degree in sustainability, and we're going to, we're going to get him oriented on Tuesday, and then he'll probably start virtually here on Wednesday, and actually knows Sid Bauer, because that's one of the things that Trigg's going to be doing, is working with Sid on organic. That's the whole Green Corps service member project plan, is to work on the organic. That's part of what we worked with the county on. We're going to try to get a Green Corps person, they're going to try to get an intern, we're all going to work on this together, so. So we're pretty excited to get another U-M-M graduate, you know, that's going to come in and work with us, and then all he has to do is find a place to live, and then he'll, he'll be here in town, he'll be working out of the office in City Hall, so. So that just popped up, and then otherwise, you know, there's, we're having the joint community meeting with Zarbeck on Saturday morning. That's going to be very interesting. We had a planning meeting today. We think we have a pretty good group of people from Morris and a good group of people from Zarbeck, and so we're going to have a conversation with them about what's going on in their community and what we're doing in our community, and it should be very interesting to get a chance to meet, meet more people through that project. I'm just trying to think, they're finishing up the solar on City Hall, so actually, we're going to close at noon on Friday, because they have to shut down the power in City Hall so that they can hook up all the electrical stuff, so it seemed like pretty good timing to be able to do that. And then the library, I think, is pretty much done, and the last step in the process, once they have everything connected, Otter Tail will come in and they'll inspect the project, and then the last thing they do is plug in the production meter and get it up and running. So we do have two buildings that are producing power right now, the liquor store and this building here, and hopefully within a week, week and a half, we'll have the other two buildings that'll be hooked up and producing power as the sun comes out, and then we'll figure out when we want to do a little get-together to celebrate those four buildings coming online. They're going to start the water project on Yankee Ridge Road, probably the end of the week here. I know there've been stockpiling pipes and stuff there. We ran into a little bit of an issue with dealing with some right-of-way things, and, you know, obviously, there's other utilities that are in rights-of-way and ditches and stuff like that, and we worked that out in the pre-con on that, so that one's going to get started. And then the last thing I'll probably mention, and then just answer questions, is we've been watching this OSHA thing, as everybody probably knows that, you know, the federal government has stated that any employer over 100 employees is going to have to have vaccinations. Well, we have about 50 full-time employees, but equivalents, but we got some information from the League of Minnesota Cities, it's every single person that gets any kind of compensation from you is going to be part of it. So now you throw in the 32 firemen we have and any part-timers we might have, so we might be a little bit closer to 100 than we think. But then, as everybody probably knows, the federal court stepped in and put in stay on that order, and so it's probably going to work its way through the Supreme Court before they finally get it up and running, so we'll see what happens with that. But we're watching that really close, just to see what happens, because we fall under OSHA standards and have to follow the rules that they have, but other than that, I would just answer any questions you might have or anything else that you want to bring up.
Blaine, after the dust has settled now with the solar projects, do we have any idea what kind of our landed cost is going to be to us? I know most of this was kind of through grant and.
About half of it was paid for by rebates, and we've already gotten, what, one rebate check from Otter Tail.
We just got the second one, too.
So, yeah, so about half.
It's been pretty quick.
About half of it's paid through rebates, and then the last project we added was the library, and at the time, Otter Tail only had 32 KW credits, is what they call them under their POP Solar Program, and the library's solar project is 36 KW, and so we're going to be a little bit short on that one. But then they had some other projects that didn't go, that they were allocating credits to, and they came back to us and said, "Well, we actually have the four more credits," so then the only thing is we won't get them until right at the beginning of the year, because they're 2022 credits. And, yeah, so that one turned out really good. That was going to take us maybe, maybe one year longer to try to recoup our investment in that, and so now they're probably all at about that nine-year mark to pay back our investment, but it's about half the project. It's about three, three grand for a KW to put up solar, and their incentive was $1,500 per KW.
That's very good.
You know, so it was a very good deal for us.
Have we had any people in the private sector at all looking, like individual, have you heard, I mean, I know that's.
There's solar that's gone up.
A neighbor has.
Your neighbor's solar went up. Yeah, that Solar United Neighbors has been putting up solar systems in Morris.
I just haven't seen any, so I didn't know.
You won't, they're so flat to the roof that it's really hard, and then like his is on the south side part of his roof, so unless you went around the.
That's typically where you put them, is on the south-facing roof.
And you really don't notice them unless you know which house it is and you're looking at, because they're pretty.
It's interesting.
Yeah, and if you go out to the MINDOT maintenance garage, you're going to see the solar that they put up there. So they put in a bunch of solar, so that was kind of nice to see that go in. So, you know, we were just talking about it with our German partners, that this is a year that a lot of solar went up in Morris, you know, and that's one of the things that we learned from them, and they were waiting for us to do it, but it just takes a little bit longer here to be able to do that. I did have one other thing I wanted to share with you, because the league, the league's been watching this really close, so the League of Minnesota Cities sent out a notice about the US House passing the $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill, and I've talked about this a number of different times. I talked about it a little bit during our budget work session, where at some point, you know, they're going to pass this thing, and it's going to have all kinds of money. So what the league did was they looked, they looked at the bill and they started breaking it down, and it says, I'll just read this really quick, because it'll give you a little bit of indication of what might be coming, but, "The bill which contains more than $550 billion in new spending will help address a sizable backlog in infrastructure needs. This includes an estimated $4.5 billion for the state of Minnesota to address highway needs, $818 million for public transportation, $680 million over five years to improve water infrastructure, $302 million for bridge replacement repairs, and access to $100 million in broadband funding." So that's one of the things I've indicated is, and if you look, look at a further breakdown, I mean, they're talking about money for transit, they're talking about money for airports, for streets, for water, infrastructure, and all that kind of stuff, and what we know about the state is what they've been doing is they've been getting this money in from the federal government, and then they've been, instead of keeping it for them. and then they've been, instead of keeping it for themselves and trying to spend it all, they've been allocating it down. Uh, I, I haven't heard yet if the bigger cities, that's the way I worked with the American Recovery Plan money, where bigger cities like Minneapolis and Saint Paul got their own funding. Uh, and then the state allocated out money to the rest of us. That's how we got our five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, uh, that we're using for the water line on, uh, on, uh, Yankee Ridge Road and then we're gonna use the balance of that on, on this special assessment project that we're gonna be doing here. But my guess is that we're gonna see money come down for airport, for transit and probably for roads and probably for water infrastructure a- and services. I don't know, but that's kinda what they've been doing. That's a huge amount of money. You know, and then MinDOT will be doing a lot of road projects with the money that they have, but, um, you know, they're, the next step's gonna be obviously the federal government figuring out how they're gonna allocate this out and get it to the states. But I think they're gonna want it to go out fairly quick so that they can start seeing the results of it. But that just came out yesterday, I think. I got that notice from the League of Minnesota Cities and they're looking at it closer.
So is this where we need, should have a plan in place for if we get that money or that's for something different? We talked about the East Seventh.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, yeah, that's part, yeah. So that's, you know, yeah, that's, you know, we already have some plans in place. So I would venture to guess if we got a chunk of money for roads, it's gonna go towards the one that we're gonna be bidding out in February and, and March. Uh, we, 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 uh, talked at the work session that we have, have, you know, the, the transit garage where we're investing two-hundred-thousand dollars of local money to get eight-hundred-thousand dollars of federal and state money to build that garage. Well, it could be, it's a hundred percent. That's what's happened in the past with buses. They're a hundred percent and, um, there's, I mean, they're talking about money for electric charging stations. They're talking about money for electric vehicles. They're talking, I mean, there's just so much money that's gonna be thrown at so many different places. Um, it's gonna be interesting to see how that all works, but we do have a lot of really good plans in place to be able to use, utilize that to include, you know, uh, I didn't mention it, it was in the newsletter, but, you know, safe routes to school. And we talked about putting in the sidewalk along Highway Nine, coming, coming around. The state's already got money for that. You know, and, 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 uh, the next big one is that Seventh Street corridor where we wanna try to get water and sewer run out to those areas in, in Morris that aren't, aren't accessible right now. So hopefully, hopefully we'll see that.
On that sidewalk project, are we looking at lighting on that as well? I don't, you know, like more sidewalk lighting rather than the street lighting. Is that a possibility too?
Uh, we haven't yet, but we could.
I mean, just to see.
That's, yeah, I, I've had a couple of people ask me about lighting on the wa, uh, bike path. You know, along the bike path and obviously, uh, we did some unique projects where we lit all of our welcome to Morris signs with solar. You know, and I think that turned out pretty good, you know, and whether or not we could find some little solar lights to light along a bike path. You know, the thing about our bike path is we don't, we don't, uh, light, we don't clear it off in the wintertime just because it's, it'd be really hard to do. Um, and so then, you know, now we're into the dark period where we have the, the change in the time where now it's dark at the end of the day, uh, whereas during the summer, it's pretty light, you know, getting into the, the late evening. But, but yeah, I mean, that's the kinda stuff that we wanna start looking at.
Any, uh, update on the Morris floral holding situation?
Uh, I have not heard anything further on it, but, you know, that's, the next step is to bring it up at the next meeting and, and then we'll, we'll know by then, you know, that's the deadline that was given to do something. We'll know by then, but I have not heard anything yet.
All right.
Actually, I saw, when I came, came back from lunch, I saw somebody was, looked like they're scrapping out some metal from the building, 'cause it looked like they're carrying the front rails off the steps or something and putting it into a truck, so I don't know if somebody's working on something. Anything else?
Don't have anything. You guys have anything? All right, we're gonna call it. Meeting adjourned.